Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 15th, and the time is 6:30 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First on our agenda is our consent agenda. First up is minutes from October 1st. Um, I don't know if I'm missing them, but I don't see them in the folder for this week. The October 15th, or is it somewhere else that I missed?
It's just the school committee meeting minutes. It's like a longer title.
I don't see it in my... Okay, I see it. From October 1st, okay. Um, all right. Any, um, comments or concerns on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for October 1st, 2024.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is warrants 22 and 23, which are going around for signature. Any questions or comments on those? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
Uh, make a motion to accept warrants 22 and 23.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is visitor's comments. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record for the meeting. No visitors. Oh!
Okay, thank you. Um, I apologize that I wasn't able to make the basketball meeting. Soccer has been very busy lately. Uh, you know, every day, six days a week. But anyway, um, for my introduction, a TV is now been displayed outside the main office in high school. It looks a slide deck of updates, events, announcements. I've seen the lunch menu up there as well as a couple of other interesting little tidbits. Uh, the student support suite is beginning to update the programs of studies. The scheduling committee revised the 25 and 26 schedule to remain in a seven-block schedule instead of a longer one-block. As for student engagement, Mr. Friendier is working on a new incentive-based program for the junior high called RAM Cares. They're in the beginning stages of designing the program. The next steps is to present to the junior high teams for feedback. As for community involvement, guidance and admin are in the beginning of statements of nominating a student to take over Project RE5-1. Principal's List is on October 22nd in the gym, catered by Chartwells. We have two special guests this year, Jess and Dylan Hollowoach, who at their time in the high school, um, earned Principal's List every single year. So that's 12 years total, six between the both. As for upcoming, well, actually, they wouldn't really be upcoming events. Um, but in better news for our fundraisers, the senior class of 2025 raised $800 at their car wash, and the sophomores raised almost $1,300 at their car wash. So overall, pretty good turnout for both of them. The junior high dance is also on the 25th. And I was not able to get into contact with Miss D. Charlotte again, but I've been trying. That's about all I have for you guys.
Excellent. Any questions for Cole?
No, but excellent as usual.
Thank you.
Are you still doing the, um, collection for the soccer team? Little yellow cards, coupons?
No, we did finish that up. It, um, wasn't our most phenomenal turnout, to say the least. I was not given the exact totals on what we raised, because I, you know, obviously I wasn't running it. Uh, but I think there still needs to be some more fundraising. Okay. For our goals.
Goals for the goals.
Literally.
Goals for the goals.
It's too bad I won't get to see them. I'll still come back.
Okay, five-year plan is always an option.
Yeah.
No, five-year plan. Just come back and visit. Thanks, Cole.
Of course. Thank you.
And good luck to finishing up the rest of your soccer season.
Pretty good.
Okay, uh, next is Chartwells.
Let's talk some food.
Sounds good. You flip cold, made tag now. Thank you. Okay.
How are you?
Good, sorry.
Some new faces.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now you get extra.
Set it.
Do you want?
Too many.
Yeah, okay. Yep.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Good, yep. This is for the people that don't know me. My name's Ken LaPase. I'm the director of dining services for Chartwells here. Gramby, um, just an overall of, uh, last year's, um, program results and, you know, this year what we got in store and what's going on, what's new. Um, first page overall, another strong financial year. You know, we profited over $100,000. Um, you know, universal free meals, it's just, uh, it's a different world now in the food service industry. As everybody and some people know, I mean, it was always kind of painful coming to these meetings. Um, but, uh, you know, financially, but it's been a lot better since COVID and since the universal free. Um, with meals continuing to be free, we still see, uh, we still could see, um, increase in participation. Um, our a la carte sales increased 35%. Students now have more money in their pockets, so they're purchasing snacks. Um, you know, food costs increased this, this year, do, you know, serving, we serve more meals. And also, everybody knows national food prices have been sky-high. And we also continue to promote our special events and programs. Um, you know, we do Super Bowl tailgate lunch at the high school, our Lucky Trade Days at East Meadow, our Food Boost and Discovery Kitchen demos at East Meadow. Um, like the gentleman was saying, we cater the Principal's Dinner, which is next Tuesday. Um, our Lunch Lady Hero coloring contest at East Meadow. And then last year, we, uh, let seniors vote on what they wanted to see on the menu the last school day. Week that day was pretty good. Um, then I can kind of do like a breakdown of last year, 23, 24 to 22, 23. It's just a little simpler than a P and L statement. Um, our total meals were up 5,000, 5,300 meals compared to last, uh, 22, 23. Um, so our revenue was like $30,000, $30,000 higher this past year than the year before. Um, obviously expenses were a little bit more due to more meals, um, more staffing. Um, but we, uh, you know, we made like $10,000 more last year than we did the year before. So we're in a good spot right now.
It's so nice to see it in the positive instead of the other way.
So I just, you know, some pictures of our events, um, up top. We gave away some Stanley, uh, cups at the Super Bowl tailgate. Um, our Mood Boost demo, we, I believe the girls are displaying, uh, I think it's a kale salad we had. Um, then we had some nice coloring for our Lunch Hero, uh, I mean, our, yeah, Lunch Lady Hero Day. Um, then we do our Discovery Kitchen. We had some, uh, spicy pineapple salsa that day. So it's just some pictures of what we've been doing. Uh, things that come in the school year, 24, 25. Uh, we were awarded over $15,000 for local fresh fruits and vegetables for the school year, which is very exciting. Um, I think we take pride here. We give a lot of fresh, you know, cantaloupes, honeydews. We do a lot of fresh fruits for the students here, um, and vegetables. Um, and we hope to increase our a la carte menu. Um, it's just tough. The, the regulations are so strict, so, um, it's just tough to get certain products in. And then we're looking to partner with UMass and their nutritional department, bringing in interns to do some educational activities in the caf and in the classroom. Um, we're hoping to get that going in January. So we're looking forward to that. Uh, new programs on the horizon. Uh, once again, we will be introducing the K through six students to our Mood Boost programs as well as, uh, it's a new global eats program where, um, you do like China one week, you do, uh, India, so they kind of taste different, uh, foods from different cultures. Introduce some to, you know, different variety of, uh, foods. And the high school will be running a student choice program where the students kind of decide what concepts they would like to see on their menu. So they'll be coming this year. Um, then challenges for the school year. Um, keeping students engaged and excited for breakfast and lunch at the high school. We all know, four years now, we've been in a closet kind of computer room. Um, so it's been, that's been a challenge, um, to keep the kids engaged. So, you know, we try different things. Um, a lot of bars we do, kind of, you know, taco bars and wing bars, kind of jazz it up a little bit. Um, and also with the meal counts consistently growing, space is starting to become an issue. Um, we basically have one kitchen here, and it's a small elementary-sized kitchen, so we're really tight on space. I mean, if we start doing more meals, we're going to have to tackle bringing them outside, truck freezer, truck, kind of keep supplies. And then, once again, just the industry staffing is just not good. It's just tough to get staff. But overall, um, you know, we have a wonderful team here. They care about the students. They care about the community and, um, we're just glad to be here and partner with, uh, Gramby. Any questions or?
First, I just want to thank you for coming and, but more importantly, for what you do for both schools, for the kids, for the lunches. Because I think it's, uh, it's important and, um, really appreciate the fact that you guys are doing great things with only one kitchen for far too long. So it's not for lack of trying, though.
It's definitely been a challenge.
That's not even a great word.
You know, they, uh, keep them, their spirits up sometimes as, uh, you know, a little, uh, but, uh...
See that van driving back and forth every day.
Yeah. I mean, we just, you know, we'd like to give these kids the best possible. It's just tough, you know, making the food over there. You gotta bring it over a half hour earlier, so it's just, it's not ideal. But, uh, we do it best we can, so. But thank you.
Any questions for Ken?
Well, just seems like it's going in the right direction. Pretty exciting about the global eats.
Yeah.
Yeah, experiencing new cultures via the food is always a blast. Uh, I personally like it, so I'm sure the kids do too, and, uh...
Especially the younger ones. I mean, they haven't really experienced that, so let's get their palates going.
It's a good foray to open the door to accepting other ways of thinking and doing. Yeah, also the nutrition department pairing up with UMass, that's, that's...
Yeah, I'm excited about that.
Yep. Yeah, learning how to eat is important, long lifelong skill, so great initiative there.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, next is the second step curriculum proposal.
Hello. Hello. I believe we touched on this the last school committee meeting. The only update I have to provide, um, with the second step proposal is that through conversations with Mr. Dubuque, he's our health and wellness teacher, he is going to be integrating the concepts at the junior high level into his health wellness classes, which there's a lot of overlap from the curriculum that he current, currently uses. And following the Michigan model, really, we'll just kind of go to the high school and he'll adopt more of the second step for the junior high. Um, our goal was to be able to launch second step, seven through 12, through an advisory program. But we're not ready and prepared for that. Um, we did take on quite a challenge with the new health frameworks that came out and having a bit of a background in the health framework, uh, there's a lot of overlap between the SEL curriculum and a lot of the junior high concepts that are taught in, um, or that are displayed in the second step curriculum, so. Um, I have shared that out with staff, and I think we will allow Dylan the full year to be able to introduce those concepts, um, use that framework along with the new health framework, which is heavy on social emotional health. And at the end of the year, we'll make a decision if we're ready to pursue second step at the high school level. So for, in the meantime, we'll just, we're going to keep it in the junior high, grades seven and eight, for now. Um, we do need to make a decision on next steps for advisory to fulfill some of those dates that we had pre-populated out for the school year. Um, I'm going to wait until the staff receives their additional professional development from CES. Um, we have a half-day tomorrow and November 5th. There's a series of workshops that will have the staff attend, like verbal de-escalation, trauma-informed practice. Once they are able to finalize, um, finalize that professional development, then we can shift gears into switching over into advisory. So the good thing is the Wellness Wednesday is the same group as the advisory. They'll just be on different days, and the students from a couple of years back had selected topics already. So what you will prepare, um, to transition probably, I believe it's in December.
So, I'm getting myself confused, so I apologize, because the thing, the proposal that's in our folder says second step SEL for seven through 12. But you keep saying seven and eight.
It's probably old.
Oh, okay, so this is not the right one, then?
Is it in a PDF?
This is what you sent us in the presentation.
Right, but it's probably old, because I've modified it since. I modified it, um, weeks back.
Yeah, it says seven through 12 still on our form.
If it's uploaded in a PDF, it won't show my current changes to it, so I can pull it up right now. I have it.
Oh, maybe I'm, maybe I need to use the link in there.
No, I just did it on that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes.
Presentation you shared.
The proposal for adoption of the second step SEL program.
And then in the actual document that says it, that has it, there's two things.
Now it says seven and eight.
Thank you.
And let me check the other one. I missed a spot. 10, 15. Wellness classes, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11, correct. And when I met with Mr. Dubuque, it was too much to be able to do in those classes, so he was going to focus just on the seven and eight. Because he already uses the Michigan model for the remaining grades.
Okay, so everything where it says seven through 12 should really just be seven and eight for now?
Yep.
Okay.
I can reshare these with you, like...
I just wanted to make sure that I was...
Yep. I know I kept saying it, but I, yes, you were right. It was not updated in those two spots.
And then, so there are also the implement, implementation? Implementation Plan talks about to gradually explain, expand to grades nine to 12. So that's what you were saying, you wait, see how Dylan feels about it after the year?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Because of the new health frameworks that came out, the state, they didn't require it for everyone to adopt it, but I think, given the experience and the work that we were doing throughout the year last year with Shanda and Dylan, um, it was appropriate for us to be able to look at it, identify what we're doing, and there's a lot of similarities between the two.
Okay.
So it made sense to, um, to just keep it at the junior high level and then wait a year.
So the budget considerations, is this, do we have money for it?
So, when Megan, I'm sharing this with you right now. When Megan was here, it was grant-supported, and we had, I asked for one year because I wanted to see how it was going to go. I didn't want to purchase something on a three-year and then be stuck with something.
So was that year last year or is this the year?
It's this year will be our year.
Okay, so we have already, we already have, have it accounted for, okay.
Yep. So at the end of this year, we'll likely need to utilize grant funds if we intend on pursuing it for longer than that. The cool part is you can really go ahead and look, so we have access to the high school. And to be honest with you, there are like pathways. It's, in my opinion, it's not super attractive right now. I think Mr. Dubuque can do a better job in remaining with the Michigan model, and it's, it's new for high school, so it's new this year. It's not new for the junior high or elementary. And we really went with second step because they utilize second step here.
Okay, great. Anybody else have any questions? All right, hearing none, I'll take the motion.
Uh, make a motion to approve, uh, second step curriculum proposal as presented.
Second? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is PVCICs co-op proposal.
I am here on behalf of Mr. Dubuque. And to share with you the need to co-op with Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School. Um, we have, our boys' lacrosse program is a varsity-only program, given the, the numbers. It's seven through 12. We had 15 athletes on the team last year and five graduated, so that leaves us with 10. That's saying that all 10 return and play, even if we get a handful of seventh graders to play. The numbers are low, especially for lacrosse team. You want to have a, a good-sized roster, and so we've co-opted before with Self-Hadley, Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion, um, before, and they have seven to eight student athletes that are interested. So we're looking to propose the co-op. Uh, typically, they're, they need to be done three, about three months ahead of time, so...
Right up against it, really?
For the spring season, yes, it would need to be voted on and approved, so they can get it to, because there are several steps in a co-op. This is a first step. So just because you say yes doesn't mean that it's going to get approved at the athletic director level. So it has to go through a series of steps.
Any questions on that? And then the, um, co-op runs, is it three years usually?
It depends what they put in for. They could do a one-year, or they could do a two.
Okay.
It depends.
Do we know what we're putting in for or asking for?
I do not. I think you're not able to fill out the form. It's called the form stack until the ADs say yea or nay. And then you can fill out the form stack, and there's a drop-down where you can select one-year or two-year. I would say it would probably make sense to do two, so you're not doing the song and dance all over again. It's quite time-consuming to be able to do it, and it seems as if they have good interest, so that's the only way they'll be able to run a team, is joining with us, which is really kind of cool.
Yeah, and we're not responsible for transportation from Pioneer Valley. It's just like any other co-op. They can get here to ride the bus.
Okay.
Uh, all right, um, what?
I thought I was making him nervous.
Uh, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
Uh, make a motion to accept the PVCICS co-op proposal.
Have a second?
Well, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You skipped something.
Oh, I didn't see that. Check authorization of GJ SHS activities account.
You're seeking another signer in the event I am absent and cannot sign student activity checks. We're proposing the idea of Mr. Todd Dorman to my right, to be an authorized signer, because there's nobody else in the building, which is really challenging. So if Barb goes looking for me, she needs someone to be able to sign up on those checks.
Is that not a normal thing? Todd shaking his head and like...
No, I just...
Is he just being funny or?
Yeah, I knew this was coming.
Uh, any questions or comments about that? Um, hearing none, you're good with it, I'm assuming? Um, I'll take the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the, an additional signer for the checked authorization, the activities account.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next is first read policy, which I believe is C, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Ally. So this is the same as usual, what's highlighted and what's been updated?
Yep, and then the strike-throughs are things that we're proposing to take out. Um, you can even see in the, um, index here. MASK had kind of proposed, um, well, really changed adding CHA and CHC together. Um, instead of separating out the development and dissemination of procedures. Um, and then the only other thing, and I don't know that I caught it on the index. You'll see small adjustments of when things were updated, word changes. the only other thing was the CHCAE, which is approval of handbooks. And CL, which were administrative reports, were not things that were continued to be included or supported by MASK. So that would be the only other proposal in the index to strike through those.
Okay.
Which we can do.
So it says CHCA, approval of handbooks, eh, approval. And then CHCAE, approval of handbooks and directives. What I, what is the difference?
I don't know.
Okay, so, all right.
So getting rid of the dash E is really the...
Mm-hmm, and then the one underneath it as well. Um, or one below. When we went through it last week, much of what was captured in, obviously, approval of handbooks and directives was not in the one.
Okay.
And then the administrative reports was not even anything that was listed currently in their policy C at all.
Okay. Um, so we'll have it on for a vote for next time? Okay, sounds good. School Choice Enrollment Dashboard.
Um, we do have five new enrollments this month, so there is a kindergarten, um, on your list. We have three pre-Ks, uh, one kindergarten and one grade seven. So we have five new this month, so our number is increasing slightly, so that's exciting news. And, but that was for September, so, um, you know...
So what number did you get to use for Sims? Was it 677?
Um, no. Yeah, 677. That was by September 30th, yes, September 30th. So that was nice, because October 1st Sims was due, yes.
All right. Any other questions or, uh, comments on the enrollment? Any needs or, um, requests to do anything with school choice, or we're hanging in at this point?
We're, we're still continuing to, to, um, you know, take phone calls for folks. There seems to be a big need for grade five. We did have a lot of openings in grade five for some reason, so, um, we, we continue to get phone calls. Ginny's taking calls on that at least once a week. Yeah.
It's not the same people over and over? Yeah, interesting.
So Pete, they're still interested. We just have to see if the, the, uh, grades are available that people are asking for.
Excellent.
I'm sure that we'll continue to have, you know, one a month at least, maybe, hoping, fingers crossed, so that would be great.
All right, ski club. Sorry, Ally, I should have paid attention. Had you just stay up here for the whole, the whole thing, all of Adele at once.
No, great. Okay, well, back to talk about ski club. So I che, I checked the results, actually, before the meeting, just to see. We had, after I sorted through some of the duplicates and some of the students who thought they were being funny, and ended up with 15 total students. At quick glance of the list, there are winter athletes on the list. So just wanted to put that out there.
One with the initials MLB.
There's.
Yeah.
So. I did have some conversations with Mr. Dubuque, you know, what the chances were. Of basketball games. Typically, they're not on Wednesdays, but they obviously would have practice. So. He kindly reminded me that we have wrestling that. Has meets on Wednesdays, so I appreciated him reminding me of that. So why I'm sharing that with you is because Hopkins Day that they selected is Wednesday. It's a six week program. And I'm going to give you some rough numbers, okay? I have been in constant communication. Again, the person, her name is Deb Louser. And she is absolutely incredible. She's been very resourceful. This cannot be like for a program, you cannot start something and just try to figure it out like. You need somebody like to have in your life to be able to support you through the process. And. So she sent me all of her permission and like her permission slips and everything that she uses. I made a Granby copy and. Changed the name. Which is great. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. The rundown on the cost is going to vary. So the club, um, the transportation, they originally said that. It wasn't going to happen for us to combine transportation. That was my first ask, because that's always the big ticket item. And they were completely against it, um, just because I feel like they have their own setup already in place. So they were looking at. Hundred and seventy-seven, and that's. For transportation to and from. For. That is departing at. I have it. It's a, it's obviously a while. I circled it. Um, departing two forty-five and returning at nine, so six times. Our bus company says it's six fifty per trip. Okay, theirs was very similar. So they need our numbers, which is what we originally were trying to do, very similar to co-op. Join with them and we can split the costs all around. So Deb. Emailed me a couple nights ago and said, hey, thinking outside the box, how about we combine transportation? I'm like, yes. Let's combine transportation. It's going to save all of us money. So they have twenty. And with our fifteen-ish, we could make it work. Um, and it would run us, I would say, under two hundred, just for the transportation. Um, the lift ticket, which would be required, would be a hundred and seventy. That's for all of the six days. And if you need lessons, that would be an additional cost. So it would be an additional eighty-seven. And if you needed to rent equipment, it would be one eleven. So you're looking at a price anywhere at like a tier at three forty-seven, four thirty-four, or five forty-five. So there's. A window, like really how a dollar amount of how much you would have to spend based on. If you have zero experience, you're going to end up spending more because they require a lesson. So you have to pay that eighty-seven. If you have no equipment, you're paying. The one eleven for the rental equipment.
And it's not one eleven per, it's one eleven for the whole six days.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That would be awful if it was one eleven every time, because it wouldn't. Be affordable for anybody. So when you're looking at it, at the end of the day, it's expensive. Um, I think it comes with the territory of skiing, being a skier and I'm. I don't know if any of the students that. Filled out the survey that were a strong yes. Were a first time skier. So that would be something that we would need to follow up with them and have a meeting. So she was waiting for my numbers. I sent them to her um, after school, so she would have them and I'm just waiting to hear back. I did connect with Berkshire and. They said that we are, we are not accepting new school programs. So I fired back an email. It said, that's why we're partnering with Hopkins, because they need our numbers, and this is what we do to make things work. We partner with schools. So that's what I have for you. Um. And I do have the dates that were slated. It was beginning in January, um, the eighth. Fifteen, twenty-two, twenty-nine. Uh, February fifth and February twelfth. With a couple of dates.
So that fifteen, even say if it's. Ten with, you know, five, assuming five winter athletes. All of those are Wednesdays, so they would. Those winter athletes really can't. Do it. So that brings your number down, down.
Correct. At quick glance, looking at it, there were winter athletes, which like that filled out the survey and they said they wanted to do it. Just from, I don't know the seventh graders. Actually, we had more seventh graders. Numbers were um, six students in seventh grade. There were four eighth graders. Uh, one ninth grader, one tenth grader, one eleventh grader, and two seniors.
Well, the tenth grader I know is a winter athlete.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. I was actually excited to see more participation, like at the junior high level.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because it gives them something to do and most of the seventh graders. It's unheard of really, right, to find a spot on a varsity team, especially we're super competitive in basketball during the winter season. There aren't as many spots on the basketball teams. So. Um. But I don't know where the final number will land. Uh, we need to sit with the kids and say, these are the dates. We need, uh, are you in, are you out? Before we proceed. So they're having their meeting this week.
Okay.
Um, to meet individually with the students, so. Uh, I guess I'm seeking for you to vote to approve because, I mean. What's the harm in it if we don't end up running it?
Sure.
So I know that we won't be able to um. Get in through their their school programming. But we could always get our name on the list for next year if we wanted to entertain doing a weekend. Or even if we want to entertain doing. Aside from the school program. You know, a couple of weekends there separately.
Sure. Um, and so they. Will there be um? Because it's a club and it's not a co-op sport per se, so there'll be no family ID, so how, they'll have to pay for that separately? How will they pay? Or are we paying, is the school paying the whole thing? Are we paying just the transportation piece? Is it coming out of athletic funds? Like, how is that?
Nope, not connected um, to athletic funds. Um, but everything that I've read about how they collect the funds is that they write a check out. They don't have family ID.
Okay.
So we utilize family ID, so we would create the program. And you know, and do all of the same. You know, concussion, all that information liability, all of that would be set up in there.
Great, so that each individual family would be paying for themselves and we would just be responsible for. The transportation piece.
Okay, so that's how we've done it in similar sports.
Okay.
We take care of that. So we would need you to. Vote to approve. The ski club. Using.
And the advisor over. That's what you.
Say it again?
And you're just voting to move the advisor?
Yep, so we vote to approve the unused stipend of six. Six thirty-two. That would be really good if I got that.
And so what is that, is that stipend paying for the transportation?
No, that would pay for the advisor or chaperone to attend.
Isn't the transportation going to be built into the cost of families?
Correct. Transportation would be embedded in. Like right now for sports, it's paid separately. This, right? Yes.
Students pay, don't pay for the buses for sports, do they?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm, it's been a long day. I can't. Transportation. Are we paying for it or not?
The families are paying for the transportation as part of the program cost.
Okay, but I thought we were saying it was like. The one seventy-seven and four thirty-four and five eighty-two or whatever those numbers were. That's inclusive of the transportation. I thought that was just the ski lift ticket and the.
No.
Lesson and rentals.
The first number. The first number I gave you, the one seventy-seven, that is ballpark. Ballpark. If they use our students. Even if we have fifteen, they use our students, that's what it would be per student. And then the other numbers I gave you, the three forty-seven is if you purchase a lift ticket, which you're going to need. And then the four thirty-four is if you need lessons.
All right, and then.
And then the five forty-five is if you need rentals.
Okay. I apologize, I'm.
No worries.
Long day.
It was, I threw a lot of information at you. I was excited I had it because it was, right? Like I said, Deb is pretty incredible, but. What we need, what we're seeking is that vote to use the the unused stipend.
Okay. Yes. Um, so we need to do some housekeeping because it doesn't say vote on our agenda. So we need to have a motion to accept a vote.
I'll make a motion to accept a vote.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Nope.
All those in favor of adjusting the agenda? All right. Okay. So now we can vote. So can I have the motion for the vote for the using the. Unused stipend?
I'll make a motion to move the unused stipend uh, for the use of the ski club.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Um, just want a few things to report out. There was a few things I um. Wanted to talk about. We partnered again with Hadley and Hatfield for a second year on Grant one eighty-nine, which is a proficiency-based outcome um. Grants to support students who um, speak languages other than English. Um, so. One way to, this grant will help us. Will help us support our students in taking the Apple exam. Uh, all students in our uh. Spanish form will be taking that. Um, and what that would allow them to do is be a. Student that received a seal of bili literacy from the state of Massachusetts. So that funding will help us take, have those students um, obtain the test. It also um. Incurs the cost of um, the recognition, recognition ceremony for any students who do pass the test. And then it also allows instructors to collaborate with districts participating in the grant with us. So what I did as a result of of this grant, I was able to um, apply. To become a school um, who um, a school distinction for um, the seal of bili literacy, and we've been accepted into that. Um. I guess. Um. Cohort of of schools, uh, seventy percent of the schools do have that. So if the students do uh, pass that Apple test, they're able to get a um, special certificate and a. Um, recognition that they have that uh. Um. Credentials to be um, bilingual, they've got a seal of bili literacy on their diploma. So we have that, and I gave you a couple of links that you can take a look at what the Apple testing talks about, and I also gave you. A link to the um. The DESI's uh, bili literacy program. So our Director of Student Services held our first PAC meeting, families on the new IEP. In addition to the Granby families, Mrs. Schuh invited the South Hadley and Beltratal School districts. To participate in a Zoom meeting on the new IEP process. It was fairly well attended. She had about twenty people attending and the Vassman Burden Warful Granby, so that was, that was exciting. I also want to thank Ginny, um, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna crucify her last name. Hadji Amowits, I said. Um, for working hard on her website. If you take a look at her website, she's really done some work with creating um. Make it more interactive. It's connected to our Facebook page. We have a lot of events. That are put on, and also Jenny's been doing a really good job with that. She enabled the live feed, so we can automatically um. Engage in that. I want to remind our families that on October sixteenth, tomorrow's a half day for students. And staff will be participating in professional development. Our parent teacher conferences will be held at East Meadow School on October twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Those are also half days for students, so um, parents, please um, take the opportunity to sign up. Save the date on October thirty-first. We'll be offering a trick or treat to families from three to five. Um, and then the friends, I've been asked by the Friends of Granby to. Let families know that they'll be hosting a trick or treating movie night this Friday on the eighteenth. Um, at Dufrane Park. Trick or treat begins at five, and the movie Inside Out Two begins at six thirty. So I also want to remind families to take the time to read the newsletter sent out by the principals. On Sunday evenings. Our principals do an excellent job of keeping families abreast of the upcoming events, as well as providing resources and supports to the families, so. Um, if you see those on a regular basis, really uh, click on them and and take a look, because you find a lot of information on them. So I want to thank our principals for doing a great job on that. And that's all that I have right now.
Excellent. Any questions for Mary Jane? All right, Todd, you're up.
Uh, no significant changes from our last meeting. I did. Meet with the department heads uh, reviewing their budgets uh, for the first quarter of the fiscal year. And um, making time to identify priorities that each department has um, moving forward to the school year.
Any questions or comments for Todd? Okey-dokey. Jill?
We won't meet again till November.
Alrighty. Um, anything that you all want to see on the agenda for next time? I forget what it is.
November sixth, the day after. It's the Wednesday. It's a Wednesday, November sixth.
Wild.
Speaking to the fifth because of the election.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So.
So do we want to have um? Uh. What are they called?
Sub.
Subcommittees.
Yeah, you can do finance.
Yeah, we'll definitely need to do finance. Do you want to do policy, Jill, or do you want to do?
Can we, can we do a slash?
Sure.
Like policy and maybe the evaluation piece?
Sure.
So if we're gonna. Um, yeah, I just think it'll, it'll work well.
Okay, great. And um, Mary Jane is going to have her. Beginning of evaluation and goals and stuff.
Uh-huh.
For us. Next week? Anything? Anything else? I can't think of anything. Alrighty then, um.
Would you like an MCAS report in November? I can do this, maybe the second. Some kind of report from the.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Um, I'll probably do that the following one then. I don't know if we're going to do the goals with that one as well, so. Probably the following one, I'll put that on there if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay. I think that's the twelfth, I think.
Nineteenth.
Okay, good, nineteenth, thank you.
Okay, uh, if there's nothing else, um. Take the motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.